Okay, order please, thank you. Hello and welcome to this, our effectively last full council meeting of the civic year. Last month's meeting, apparently some ill-chosen words with describing behaviour of the local site representative towards council staff. We've been asked to correct the impression we give them and are happy to confirm that no official complaints against the site representative have been received. On the 19th April, we held the annual town meeting in Tottingham Town Hall. A lot of councillors there, a lot of people doing presentations, not too many other members of the week, which is slightly disappointing. Especially as the presentations were very, very and very interesting and showed that the groups that we do give grants to, how much they can achieve with just a small amount of money. I think they all did great work. As we've just entered the new fiscal year, our grant funds have been replenished, so I'd like to encourage any groups out there listening and watching to come forward if they've got a sensible project that we can help with. So, like I said, this is our final meeting of the full council pending the elections on May the 4th. It's a slightly odd situation for us in Bingley, as all nominated candidates are deemed delected because all seats are effectively uncontested. There are a couple of our councillors who haven't restood, so I would like to offer my thanks for all their efforts and the help from Bingley to councillors Barton and Curdall. Councillor Barton has been with us since 2019, was chairman, climate chairman, urgency issues. And whilst councillor Curdall has only been there 18 months, if it will be only that amount of time, I did look it up. His energy, drive and social media skills were we sadly missed. Thank you to you both for all your efforts and we wish you well and all your future endeavours and will maybe see one, if not both of you, back here at some point in the future.
I hope so, may come bother you, I'm not a puppet.
You would both be very welcome to attend as public participants. So, our new council effectively forms on the 16th of May and that meeting, we've just confirmed it's going to be here. I'm sure John will mention this, anyway, the first of our three concerts that we commissioned for the Miller Park Bandstand is held this Sunday between 10 and 4pm, so go on, enjoy a day out. And whilst the town council is not putting any events around the King's Coronation, there are many other events to choose from and bonting would be up to Brighton and Town Square, so let's hope the weather's kind and not having a bad holiday weekend. That's enough for me, so we'll move on to 22, 23, 25 for apologies for absence. So we've got apologies from councillors Williams, Winard and Khan, who certainly seem fit. Proposals?
Proposals?
We're doing on mask?
Second to my mask.
Alright, oh, we've got that, thank you. 22, 23, 25, 5, disclosures of interest, we see declarations of interest from the councillors put items on the agenda. Okay, to receive written requests for dispensations for disposable pecuniary interest, I'm assuming you have got those for that. 22, 23, 25, 6, for minutes of the previous meeting, does anybody have any comments or corrections on the minutes of the previous meeting?
Yeah, just want to say, I apologise for not doing my apologies, I thought I had you my apologies, but almost there I did, so I apologise, but I apologise.
Okay, thank you. I don't think that needs to go in there. Do we have a proposal for the minutes then? Yeah, councillor Good, second by councillor Turner, or in favour?
Abstention.
I don't know, because I wasn't there.
Two abstentions. So I'm abstention, I understand, I'm nice to that as well, sir.
Abstentions, please put your hands up, just so we can... Okay, 22, 23, 25, 7, confidential items discussed in conference, item 272, does anybody have anything that they think needs to move from the agenda? 22, 23, 25, 8, public participation. We don't remember the public, I am asking to introduce himself because I know who he is.
My name's William Gentleman and I'm actually John Eneke Mof.
Oh, yeah.
Do you have anything you wish to say?
You can ask this part here.
Pleased to see you here today.
Thank you.
Welcome. Okay, and we're on then, 22, 23, 25, 9, ongoing items, updates on the following issues, agreeing to further actions, Bingley call, I don't think we've got an update.
No one provides an update.
We've got late apologies from Mo, she's not feeling well, just got the word that we're not going to be knowing what's happening. I haven't seen anything advertised that has, and I haven't seen, because the last meeting, the representatives of friends being a problem, talking about having another public meeting in any, I haven't seen any evidence of that.
On Facebook, I think it's the town for mayor.
I've heard rumours of wanting to pass it, it would be in the town council.
There's probably lots of rumours.
I've heard a bit of rumours.
The council, right to the council, wanting to pass it, it would be in the council.
Haven't heard that one. We haven't made some overture of the director of place at Bradford Council, because the presentation may all come to fruition at this moment. So then we'll move on to the climate emergency. Don't think we've got anything else from Yorkshire Water, or was anything picked up in the past or something? Dave, is there anything you want to leave us with?
No, no. Do we ever do anything about solar panels? Yeah.
Yeah, we'll touch on that later.
Thank you.
We'll touch on that later, yeah. And then, C, speeding defective devices, now we did get a response from Bradford on this.
There was an email from Craig Williams, I did prompt him when I bumped into Highways who were having a retirement party for somebody and they happened to be in Bingley, so I think that that followed fairly soon thereafter.
Yeah, it was good that the forecast was sent, but it would help because, I mean, I'm aware a lot of the work, would it be possible to, remember more long-term, know where they are or not?
I think they were in the original document, maybe if we can circulate that to members.
Would it be?
There was just one day query, wasn't there?
Yeah, which I've sorted out with it, but incidentally, I know what can really help, it was talked about, couldn't really do anything because they were concrete lamp posts, well, they are now all steel lamp posts, so we'd maybe need to replace some of the sites where it couldn't do anything because they were concrete, because they are getting now round to Bingley to do the LED replacements, which actually removes concrete cores and puts a new steel in, so they would then be suitable for the sets.
Well, do we have, I think you said we're going to run two or three, we're three here, do we have three sites that are going to lose, get them up to stop that way, because if we replace anything, there's little bit to do anything, you know. I think that's what the Highways are doing, and they're assessing sites at the moment, so we'll see what happens.
Well, if they want to leave it for themselves, I don't think it matters, we'll leave it for now then.
I'm just conscious if we constantly leave everything, we never actually deliver anything.
Yeah, no, that's fine.
Can we ask why it has to be steel?
Yeah, because the concrete won't act structurally integrated enough to actually take the works on. We've got to be stable.
Have they taken in consideration, myself and I think John put down the Tottingham ones, you know, the lamp post 11 and 13? That wasn't on the pictures that we know of.
I can, I'll get in touch with Craig again this week and find out. But Tottingham, lamp post 12 and 13, 11 and 13?
I think it's something I was...
Couple of photos, chaps, and then at least a couple of photos for Craig, maybe?
Yeah, well, it's generous, it's, yeah, I should have to do it out of the bedroom window.
I can do it, something maybe road totting of all over the town.
Send the photos then, I'll send them.
I'll pass it on to you, yes.
And then can we all consult on the documents and say where it is and find, and then just circulate that to everybody, except we're all talking of the same thing.
Because I got the impression from the email that apart from Mo, they were happy to use any of those, so it'll be down for us then to decide which of the ones are we prioritising.
Yeah. It would. So we need to contact whoever's involved. Pull the consult on the documents back together, I've got a suggestion, say that very specifically. Select and recommend, select and recommend some sites, yeah. Okay, anything else to say, has anybody got any questions? What went wrong then? To 22, 23, 26, finance and the annual governance and the council's return. So there's a number of bits to this, so first off, to receive a note, the annual internal audit report, the 22, 23, which was the A R page 3. Anybody have any questions on page 3?
I know about, I'd imagine, these petty cash payments were not supported by receipts and it's not covered, so they never attended that.
We don't have petty cash, that's why.
No, but I mean, didn't that come into the terms of when you were collecting money from the...
No, that's not counted, just petty cash, no. Yes, it's not applicable, we don't have, we don't have a cash box that people can affect them with.
No, no.
So in terms of that first page 3, can I have a proposal?
Absolutely.
Councillor Good, second by councillor Turner, all in favour? Or accepting that? Thank you. We move on to page 4, we have to complete and approve section 1. So, unless anyone's got any comments on it, I propose that we take yes to questions 1 to 9 and not applicable for, what's wrong, sorry, not applicable for question 9. Yeah?
Second to my mask.
Second by councillor, all in favour? Thank you. Then to approve section 2, accountable statements, 22, 23, which is the A R page 5. Does anybody got anything they want to add on this one?
Philip, yeah, just, it's just a comment to know, I just, we're looking at this, I think I've seen a, oh, about 26,000 pounds. I think it sounds a lot, but I don't know. What can we discuss a bit further, future stuff we're making?
Well, it's...
I know that includes, I know that includes actually insurance and everything. It just sounds, you know, remember the public senior, you know, or my main, I don't know.
I think it's because you had the period, because when I started in the May of 2011...
Does that include the period of...
I, I was part-time, so the wages would have been less for 2021-2022 than they were for 2022-23. The local plan was the county, it was the staff class, so it's our fourth complement of staff.
Yeah, for a few months, we basically were all 10%. Yeah, right.
Any more questions on this, I know there were some spreadsheets circulated that just proved some of these numbers have come about slowly. Any more questions on some of the first, first by councillor, second by councillor, or... Thank you. And then to note the period for the exercise of public rights.
I didn't even notice that at all, that's not...
That's where we have to put it on our website.
Oh, yes, I did, I did figure that, yeah.
So it's, it's a period and it has to be up for, I think it's a two-week period where it must be displayed. That's just to note, just to note, we're just noting that. We're just noting that. And then to receive a note, the internal auditors, year-end supplementary reports and agree any options. Does anybody have any comments from what's in the report?
Not a lot, I think everybody will have it.
Well, I think if it goes to finance, again, we discussed, there's not anything major on there, is there, but just so we can make sure of the actions.
I mean, I think from reading the notes, one that was picked up at the back and just the notes at the back, we struggled to find some of the information on the website, which I think is one of our ongoing issues and something we don't want to pick up and do as a, as a project this coming year, because I think, I think it is difficult to find things or it's difficult to know if you found the right version of symptoms on. So can I have a proposal for the internal audit, councillor Councillor Good? Councillor Bear, all in favour? To receive the schedule of payments for April, anybody got any comments or questions to the schedule of payments?
Sorry, speaking to that, no, the captain nurses repairs to baskets, but, so you, Philip and John.
Yes, basically, we think that probably when they're putting the lights up, probably jobs can disturb or damage some baskets with, they haven't been replaced yet, but they have ordered them and they have them in their possession.
And are they aware that they damaged, are they aware that they damaged them then?
I have no idea, it's one of those things, I would, they became damaged and we just make the assumption, but it's all been, been ordered and councillors have had them in their possession. Okay?
Yes, thank you, John.
Any more queries in the schedule of payments?
No, oh, yeah. Since water bill for Peckley, December to March is 96 pound, it waters off, how's that?
We've queried that before, haven't we?
We shut off well before December, it's only just gone on about a week's and... Could you look into that?
96, so...
Yeah.
We should check that for a stand.
So how did they grow for water then? How did they grow for water?
Maybe in winter, because it's wet.
They're not wet, they're holding it up a bit, yeah. So we're going to query that, it's a direct debit as well, isn't it? Okay, so with that query, and...
Oh, just one other, sorry, I think we've brist on there, do we pay them?
Yeah, that's whoever gets internet from.
I thought, yeah, no, I thought we were getting it free.
We did. We did? For six months, it's been on for six months now.
They're not giving it free all the time?
No, just for six months.
We'll check whether it's over or not then.
Any more friendly knowledge on the schedule of payments? Okay. First by councillor Good, second by councillor Turner, all in favour? To receive the bank reconciliations for March, any questions on this? I propose we accept a second by councillor, all in favour? To ratify the updated asset register, you'll see there's been a couple of things added to it and it last appeared, not, not least the CP title. Anybody got any comments or queries at all? Can I have a proposal?
I think we'd be, F and G'd be, the...
We're going to review it.
I keep saying, I say the truth, even Nicola are going to do some, have some training about assets, assets, and then we would make another stab at looking through the list of the next F and G'd, yeah?
I think they said we're going to review it, pro to F and G'd and adjust things and remove some of the older items for possibly post-training, if we think they should come up or see what we do at that point.
So I think we decided to, we'd have to go with it now, so, oh, propose that, that's maybe...
First by councillor Good, yeah, okay, second by councillor Turner, all in favour? And then we have to receive an update on the bandstand electricity supply, that's what we're working on.
Mid-morning today, I had an email that said Mick on it and the, it was apologising for not responding, I noticed the first email from Eve were on the 14th of March, and it suggested that I spoke to him, well, it's perhaps as well because although Eve had clearly informed him of what, what we would like, required, it didn't seem that, the email said, it's sent, excuse me, that... Just a second, yes, the fellow. With regard to your request, we would be happy for town council to install electricity supply to the bandstand in Miller Park, subject to agreement of the specification. We need to understand where the supply was coming from, all that has been covered by Dave Wells, he wasn't aware of that, so basically I gave him a full history of starting last October, going right through it, right up to us approving it at the last full council meeting. So, on the request that Eve sent to him, it was official approval for the town council to have permission to undertake this work, that is not relevant because the contract would be commissioned by Bradford Council, we would pay Bradford Council for doing that. The comprehensive service level agreement, he said, you don't need that because, because we would be paying for it, it would automatically belong to, because it's servicing there on their property, it would belong to Bradford Council, and I said, well, that's maybe the case, that we don't need one, but we would like one, so could you send an email to Bingley Town Council? What's the word I'm looking for there? Endorsing, endorsing, that was the situation, that they would maintain, et cetera, et cetera. So, as regards the full specification, if we need that, I would suggest that we write to, if the council wishes, still wishes this, that we, Eve writes to Dave Wells at Bradford Councils, the electrical man, and if there's any other, I stood on, teased across camera down now, so we can write and ask, get these approvals. So, going forward, it's, it's not a problem apart from, you know, is the council happy?
Yes, any timing, Val, any idea of the timescale of these things done?
Well, no, because, not at this, not at this moment, because we haven't, we haven't issued an order or acceptance at this time because we don't, they aren't considering the information that we need or that the council needs.
So we wait. So we wait.
Well, I'm just saying, if we took, took more things along, if we talked to the man that they're like, Dave Wells, who's the electrical guru, if you want to call him that, I don't know his actual title, but he would be able to tell you what's on the quotation.
Yeah, at the last meeting, we had quite a length of discussion, and in my view, a comprehensive service level agreement needs to be in writing, agreed by both parties before we go any further, it's all right, a chap at Bradford Council saying X, and then that chap moves department, and the next guy doesn't agree with it, we need a written service level agreement that both parties can enter into, it's a lot of money for us to spend, and then Bradford Council turn around and say, well, you're responsible for insurance, maintenance, electricity, you name it, means the SLA, and that needs to go through with the fact we're talking to Callum.
I agree with councillor Hazardine in a degree at least, there was, it was passed last time conditional on there being an SLA, and we don't know what Bradford SLA that they're saying would apply to or looks like at this point, it might be really generically quite a bit not being very useful, or it might be more considerable than that, although we just don't know at this point, and so I agree that we would need to go through that and make sure that we've got communication saying, this is under our remit and it being written there, cast in stone, so as and when it does move department, whoever moves department, we have got that commitment there, and the only question I really have is where are we on the quotes, because there were time limits and now time limit expired.
Well, then again, that's, that's out of our hands, because Northern Power within ran out of the 17th of April, I don't know, the other one were sort of open, it didn't have a, it didn't, the installing contractor, i.e. the chap that's taking it from Northern Power that it's supplied to the bandstand and putting anything in there, at that stage, that wasn't on a fixed, a fixed date and time, so we'd have to get, get this communication from McBrigslit and then go back to Dave Wells, but as I say, just to cover these points that you'd asked for, and Dave, I won't say Dave, but the council asked for, on the specifications, I think Dave Wells for that one, and then he said he would write to you, McBrigslit as well, I can't do it any further than that. Just to expand really, what Lewis was saying, about the pricing, we've got no idea what it's going to cost now, don't, so we need a price from Bradford as well, and we're asking a question.
We need to go through the whole process, what's come back, what the spend is, what the revenue is and what the then price is. That's the only way we can, what consent is going to come through.
I think for this one, we should alert our district councillors to keep it on this one as well.
I believe we already had, because we thought it was contentious, but we've had more success probing people through the wall, if something's happening.
Yeah.
And they all have said, speaking of...
I did speak to, when I went to pick the leaflets up for the bandstand concerts, I did speak to Mel Smith and told him I wasn't happy, and he said he would have a word with him, so he might have a word with me.
So we need to continue going, going, go around the process, honestly, so thank you for that, John.
I mean, yeah, I think we ought to say thank you to John, because he's been so consistent about this and patient about it, so he deserves our thanks.
As a final point, I think a lot of our agenda tonight, I think it'd be easy for a resident to listen to us and say it's all a bit self-sustaining. As a final point, I think, um, a lot of our agenda tonight, I think it'd be easy for a resident to listen to us and say, it's all a bit self-sustaining or nameless again here because we're looking at early council, we're looking at all of this and it's just to keep us going. But this is exactly the sort of thing that we as a council should be wanting to do more of. And yeah, to echo, um, Dale's point, your work on this has been outstanding, John, uh, it's been really good. And then, yeah, hope the council can do a bit of support.
Okay, thank you. So we'll move on after that. With that, I'd like to bag twenty-two, twenty-three, two-six-one, emergency support, something like that.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, our erstwhile office, uh, emailed McBurro on the twentieth of March regarding an update. And as I've just checked my email, we haven't had one yet. But there again, if seventeenth of March was a time scale for the previous item, we've just got an update, um, it is difficult. But all I can suggest is that we maybe contacted again and all this in the period.
I mean, I, I appreciate that emergencies can happen at any time, but we're, we're out of the main, uh, emergency season anyway in terms of flooding.
A lot of flood.
Not necessarily, well.
No, not necessarily.
But we do, we do need to get our, get our ducks in a row on this one.
Uh, sorry, I agree that it's not necessarily, but we're out of the emergency season. Uh, anything could happen at any time, including flooding, actually.
We're going to need a super plan first.
Yeah, absolutely. One in a hundred year event, that's what I'm so familiar with.
So we'll continue to press, to break it. I'm assuming that the funding we were hoping to go for as well has that happened.
Send back about that, that's maybe another chase up.
Yeah. Okay, so just chasing on that one. Twenty-two, twenty-three, two-six-two, the event is in market committee, it has not met since the last meeting, so there's nothing to report on that. Twenty-two, twenty-three, two-six-three, F and G P, we've had the F and G P minutes as part of the back. Um, apart from what I would say to the fairly normal business as usual stuff, I think things tonight are... We have given out our first grant of the year, which was what we had over the last year to Bradford and Bingham Cricket Club. We did, we have agreed to review the asset register more regularly in terms of work to be done at the hub to progress some of it. Uh, we did decide that, um, we were fed up of waiting for the solar panel company who still haven't come back to us to arrange to visit the site. So councillor Turner was sourcing us some alternative companies to go and see.
Yeah, I mean, we draw a blank really because the, the sort of domestic suppliers are not really interested in it because of the configuration of the roof. And being a flat, being a sloping roof, sloping inwards and it being a felt roof and plus the fact the load that would have to put on it because they would have to put framework on to support the panels because the panels would be facing the wrong way. So they said it's not something they would take on board, but we need to look at somebody who does industrial supply. Now, I have been given a contact person and, um, they were, they're going to get in touch with us. So I need to chase them up. Only the other day I got the information for this person, so they might be able to give us some leads. But whether it's feasible, I think it's going to be a challenge because quite frankly, not only have you got the panels on the roof and you've also got to puncture the roof and seeing felt roofs isn't the easiest thing, but you've also got the workings to go inside. Well, we're a bit, a bit on space inside the hub anyway, so you've got a unit which is quite sizable, uh, which is the inverter. And then you've got the battery backups if you're having them, so you'd be looking for space to put them. So there is a, an issue on that, so it might not be quite, um, viable, um, both from, from an aspect of fitting them and also it might not be cost effective. So we need to look at that, but I'll, I'll dig in and keep pushing them to try and get somewhere with it. But as I say, the domestic suppliers wash their hands of it, but I know. And I understand from their reason, they don't want to have any repercussions from it, they want to have a straightforward job. Because they take a tile off a roof and fasten it inside it in a different way, or it's difficult with felt. So there are issues doing it on the hub. That's a nice way to describe it, but we'll keep pursuing, see if we can do anything. And if we get a price, then we can make a decision. So we'll see whether he'll take it on board.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, any, any questions on the F and G P? No? On the twenty-two, twenty-three, six-six-four neighbourhood plan working group? Um, I suppose it's got to be okay, because councillor Williams is here. Uh, neighbourhood plan working groups met again to look at, I think it was their last time, but, um, the designer has put together most of the documents, the main body of the plan, but there were a significant number of photographs of missing, um, some of the ones that had previously been provided to us, he not noticed, so we bring that through there. Councillor Williams being, had been to see, being the camera hub to try and get them to go and take us a few photos and film, film the gaps in the plan. Um, the other major piece of work is the policies map. So within the plan, there's an awful lot of, this is our policy, this is our policy. And one of the things that Bradford have been talking, have asked us to put together is the policies map, which is effectively a map of the whole parish and then highlighting the various areas and curbs, bridges or properties where we might be doing things or suggesting that things have been done. Uh, there's been a bit of miscommunication between us and the design, what we, what we wanted, so we've gone back to clarify that. And the plan itself should come back to the council in June, I think, given election period, new council. Um, it will be June before we, we bring it back for the final okay to go to scheduling for the consultation. Yeah.
When would we expect to see completion of the pitch, uh, of the neighbourhood plan?
I would, I would think during the next civic year, but I would not put anything shorter than that. I, if, if this time next year it's gone for a referendum, I think we'll be doing this before. Because all the steps are very well drawn out once we get into us consulting, then Bradford consulting, Bradford consulting, then an independent examination and then a referendum. They're all the steps we've still got to go through. That's the process. Okay, moving on then to twenty-two, twenty-three, two-six-five, planning committee, first class.
Yes, we've all seen the minutes, everybody noted as the minutes. And, um, as our next meeting, it will be till the twenty-third. We've already had seven applications in, and so I have actually been in touch with Mark Hutchinson. Um, and he's granted so far extensions and all. And I'm going to continue doing this because obviously they're going to continue to come in and Nick is on holiday next week, so I've told Nick that I'm on it to that. And to revit it at the moment, they've all, you know, granted extensions.
Other questions on planning? Okay, now, twenty-two, twenty-three, two-six-six, green and clean?
Yeah, so last Saturday, um, we had another litter pick on Thursday, I think it was. Good, good, good coincidence. Um, extremely good turnout, we had a bit of a miserable start to the morning, um, but we finished up with sixteen volunteers and we managed to collect, um, twenty-one bags of rubbish round Coslax. Just got to say at this stage, we, uh, we gave our two metre litter pickers, uh, made in voyage on Saturday. Um, a further four bags were collected round Galway Yat, uh, from the couple that got six bags at last official litter pick. So that were twenty-five bags from eighteen, uh, residents now. The main reason that, uh, we had such a good turnout, I think, across flats were they've got a particularly, um, active, uh, village society. Uh, I did write to them prior, to secretary prior to the event and Tim Megitt, who's the chairman, he gets the, uh, emails from us and it circulated as well, so we, we got quite a number of local, uh, local residents there. Uh, we've re, um, rescheduled the green and clean forum to, it's at the Cardigan House, ten to twelve on Saturday, the twenty-seventh of, um, May. Because the, uh, the speaker wasn't available. Um, I did write to, um, uh, Coslax Village Society, thanking them for, for the, for the assistance. I think that covers it. Then if you have any questions.
Is, is the speaker's cardigan mask still on the green area zone?
Become, yeah, 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 yeah.
What, what, what tolerance second you're doing?
Pardon?
What tolerance second you're doing?
It's ten to twelve. That is already, um, circulated, the proposed agenda for it, so it's about an hour, an hour, um, from the speaker. And then hopefully we'll have some, uh, presentations from local groups, for example, all the community, any community groups, uh, over here, plants, et cetera, et cetera. So, uh, we'll, we'll look forward to that on the twenty-seventh. That's it, thank you. Uh, then again, can I just ask if anybody has any, I don't understand where this all this letter comes from. Um, because you go, uh, you go to these venues and you think there isn't any, um, and on the streets and yet it's, we keep getting this stodgy stuff. But please, if anybody has any areas that they'd like to highlight, um, let me know and then we can, we can have a, um, concentrate there. Okay, thank you all much.
Could, uh, chair for my personally, my address used for the litter picks, please?
Yeah, okay, I'm sure that's known.
Shall I give that to Clark afterwards?
Of course, yeah. And sure you are informed. Twenty-two, twenty-three, two-six-seven, five rise white marking? Still heard nothing back from Greg Williams about the brown line when we, when we come around. I have had a call with Canal and Rivers Trust, um, to reinvigorate their, their project. They're looking to see what they can do about producing the information sign that you're going to put in the car park to help point people in the right direction, give them some information and white markings. Obviously, as you know, um, I, I reported last month that they're taking the litter bit out now because they're short of money. So they're not sure how much funding they have available to do anything on this at the moment, but they've gone away to check into what they've got. Um, and we've agreed, when they come back, we'll have a joint approach to Bradford twenty-twenty-five to see if we can, um, get some funding via them and then see where, see where we go. It may be that we need to go back to our, like, cheaper option of putting paint extensions on foot lanes and get something done. Starting to push it along again around, any questions?
Yes, um, I actually walked down the footpath, five rows recently. Is there any plans to make a more obvious marking at the town end?
That's what we're talking about.
That's what we're talking about.
That's what I'm about now.
We're going to have white markings from the station for people to walk along and get up and go across an information board in the car park on Main Street. Um, so there are information boards and as we get off the train station, I think there's been some damage that was on there, but there was a big, a big sign about, there's five rows. So twenty-two, twenty-three, two-six-eight, town cons report, can I see the town cons report? Has anybody got any questions, queries on it?
No, I'll see straight to it.
Okay. Twenty-two, twenty-three, two-six-nine, correspondence, denote any correspondence and agree any actions necessary. So we've got Bradford Council, Groan, Enem, what shall I recognise this for?
That was the one that Lee, you edited with the...
So that was the development twenty-year year, oh, okay. So, yeah, I can recognise that a bit, this is the first one under reference. Bradford Frick to us saying, uh, they are developing a new twenty-year development framework for children in Bingham. Um, Eve and I had a call with one of their consultants, they're doing, doing some pre-consultation to fill it into the consultant, to fill in the consultation. I have to say, I think they were not entirely clear where they think they're going with this. Um, one of, they understood this for time for what were, I think it was, what was our one word we would use to describe Bingham in context? And whilst Eve said rural, I said they liked it, so. And effectively our conversation went along those lines of lack of investment, all the issues around the store, not, not seeing that Bradford supports those. We'll, we'll see where, where that goes, but except they'll come back, I mean, I think more consultations. They said they, they had done some suggests, some consultations with the ward councillors, but it sounded very much like it wasn't the individual ward councillors, it was a big meeting, which ward councillors could attend. Um, but they are, they are looking at that. Dale, do you have a question?
Well, somebody email we already received, when it said we were going to consult with us, or is there another, I've read one somewhere, where they're on about coming back to his council. This must be the same one.
No, that was just today, that one, wasn't it?
Oh, it's today, yeah, that's another one.
That's, that's something different, yeah.
There's another, another council today.
Yeah, because, because I think, I think the other thing they said, which was a little confusing, was that the development plan has got nothing to do with the, like, the plan, and the rest of the government, but it has got to be all in Bradford.
That was something to do with the, um, is it something to do with the, the borders of the parish?
Yeah, that's with the constituency. It's the constituency borders, I think.
Yeah.
Sorry, I don't, I'm good.
Does it involve any planning thing on the twenty-year thing or not?
Sorry?
Does it involve any planning, um?
No idea.
No, that's a question. I seem to have money for spending it in consultations.
Yeah.
Been a lot of consultants, haven't they? So a lot of coming out, don't they?
We'll, we'll come back to some of that, I mean, I won't get too hurt. So if we move on to the big, the email from the post office about the consultation on the closure of Gilston Post Office. Um, it's there for people to respond personally to consultation. Don't know if there's a council, if there's anything we want to...
Like I said, I don't do, there's no other, there's no other to do, is there?
Andrew came last time and explained that he was retiring.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, I think councillor Turner was right, it either moves the proposed place or...
Would move the post office, yeah.
Yeah, same as, yeah.
Okay, so all done about that. Uh, the email from Elbrook Church about the increase in the room rent if we use the microphone setup at meetings there. Um, I got the impression that the general consensus was that the microphones will not help, um, but I personally think the acoustics in that place are awful.
I, I mean, both councillors back with myself, could hardly hear anything happening about you two.
The long and sharp is, is the heat is long, the, the heat is long on, you wouldn't need the microphone. It's when the, I mean, David and I were sat there, you couldn't hear anything, could you? It's when the, I mean, David and I were sat there, you couldn't hear anything, could you? You know what? So.
Well, that's the point, we're not going to be putting the microphones in future.
Same as.
Not that good.
Not that good at pop.
Perhaps at some stage we should look at our own system.
As I said, we'll do a need if it works, if heated one on. Anyway, it's where, it's where we.
I think we possibly would in that venue because it is, things are, it's still a lot difficult to hear things because of the height.
Do we have to use that venue?
No, no, no.
No, you don't have to use any venue.
It's just, it's just sometimes it's difficult to get somewhere that's vacant on that night, no.
I understand that.
This is, this is, I'm not the.
It's almost. It's about as well as when you don't want to always be.
Rather, just to, yeah.
Yeah, no. Look, we almost have a more late, come on.
But that would be unfair of me to people in Gilstead or people in Elwick.
In Cotterley as well.
Yeah, you have to use Gilstead venue for a while, yeah.
Well, that's another one we've got for acoustic, isn't it?
That's another one that's freezing cold and awful acoustic.
Yeah, but it's summertime.
I mean, I have suggested that maybe we should look at smaller venues as well. Because historically we've looked at venues this size so that we can have a reasonable public presence. However, we very rarely have a public presence. If there's something really contentious on the agenda, we do get some members of the public, but it is, it is rare. So I think we could go to a smaller venue where everybody can, if, if, if just don't pay for some members of the public to drop it. It would be standing room mode.
Yeah, counting accounts. Big enough, isn't it?
So, so well, our happy day, we're not going to take the microphone to Elwick and believe that we should work for.
Yeah, yeah.
Email from Bradford council department about the locations of the city, they talked about already. The email from Canal Rivers Trust about the litter bins on the canal. So we have now, as a council, we've been approached. Does anybody have any comment?
Well, I notice there's actually eighteen bins on that map, the centres, of which five come with keeper. But I think they should be retained and we should see what the charge, the implications are. If they don't keep the litter bins out, it'd be a complete mess on the canal side and we'd be litter picking every day of the week. It's like there's something in it.
There's only five in, there's five in our.
What?
In, in, in England. Five in England.
Walk along the whole canal side from, from what comes into.
And we're only going by that, the dots on that map and there was, I counted five from, from Dalley Gap to, to.
Where we come in, definitely, we pull across flats as well.
And, yeah, that will up to cross flats, yeah.
I think, I think, well, I got thirteen out of the eight.
Thirteen?
There's eighteen on that map. And if you look at the map, there's five comes under, under Keithy from what I could work out, because he gets up to five rills then. So you've got to work it back to where it gets to cross flats. But anyway, it doesn't matter what the number is, it's irrelevant, we need to find that way to.
What, when, Chair, if it's only that, the one, as you said, something needs.
We need to retain the bins, I mean, it starts out over the management.
So shouldn't it first be whether Bradford's willing to take it on first? Yeah?
Well, they have written to everybody as well as now, so Bradford might take.
So at this, at this point, I'd suggest that we just wait and see what's going on. When have they stopped in doing it?
I don't know.
No, it'd be now, wouldn't it? New, new financial year.
They've, they've talked about taking them all out this next financial year. But they're actually alright into councils to try and take them before they do physically remove them because obviously it doesn't make any sense to take them out, to put them back.
Maybe we need an actual conversation as this comes up the Shipley area. Maybe have a conversation with David Fisher to see what the mood music is at Shipley, whether they are taking them on as, as part of the local collection team. It may be that is the case. If that isn't the mood music, then we would need to find out how much Bradford would charge. Per location could soon be more difficult than others.
Yeah, the one at the bottom, three, I think, is the one.
Per location. Then go from there, I think. It may be exorbitant, it may be something that we feel is worthwhile. But I think that discussion first, we need to see whether Shipley had a cleansing team that actually would take them over within. Because there's, there's something sat there as well. So to me, it seems sensible and that conversation and maybe, um, to make an extra.
Yeah, not obviously.
This is really not a great idea, Chair, because those bins, I've regularly reported bins that are absolutely overflowing with stuff. And I personally decline to pick up rubbish, other people's rubbish that I then have to carry home. And I have left Canal Rivers Trust because I'm really upset about this.
Part of the issue with the canals and river trucks is they didn't empty them on a regular or scheduled basis. It seemed very ad hoc about complaints and we as shipping dock about bins overflowing were actually not Bradford council bins, they're actually bins on the canal property, which weren't anything to do with us. But I think a few times we actually did empty them just for keeping the public happy.
Yeah, no, I think if they go in, it's going to be a real problem. But it would be nice if people would take the litter home, like, it's, it's the whole, it's the standard thing that's about. You can, you can climb to the top of the mountain to a beauty spot and people are happy to carry their stuff. Although it would also make it lighter, they're saying, oh, they'll carry it. There we go. So moving on. Notifications from Bradford council on the following, talked about the development framework. Consultation on the first draft of the Bradford district design code for new homes and streets. Has anybody got?
We have a council commenting.
We have, so, I don't, I don't know whether something we should push to maybe plan working group. Because it's a design code, whether planning or not to look at it.
Did we also get planning done?
We did, we did discuss it.
And the comments have been back and muscles have been stood up, haven't they?
We, we added to, to our, now, I can add that, we did have it at a previous parliament meeting, not last one, one before, I think. But we just, we just noted the comments that we made, really. There's nothing really we could add.
So we don't think there's anything further that we should comment on? No? Okay.
Not really, not at the moment, this was a separate issue, obviously, isn't it?
I don't see anything else.
Well, that's it. And then just the notice of uncontested elections, which I think probably everyone has, hasn't it? How about the council then?
I sent an email about being a town council on behalf of County Community Association for the, the money, the silver money that were given to Cotterley to refurbish the flower beds. I've got to say that I like it meditating, the thanks from, I'll say residents of Cotterley, certainly in the garden. This is, I didn't realise myself how important it was, but it's really, really important. They've made a really good job of it and going forward, it's going to save, it, it, it's, it kind of, we're going to sustain the, the situation without it. So please, if you can have a minute on that, that'd be good.
Okay, yeah. Thank you, John. So then, twenty-two, twenty-three, two-seventeen, promotional items to consider, any promotional items for this meeting? What have you got?
As you said, Chair, the, the, the bands down concerts are starting this Saturday. I know it's already been circulated by, by Debbie, but just to my people. They did get, we got five hundred leafs of tea to, I've distributed a few, a few in the office. If anyone wants any for the.
I, I, I fixed, fixed a lot from Cotterley, I've not come back to offer share, but we're, we're tonight, if anybody wants to. If you want any more.
I don't need them, no, see, I've got some, I, I, I'm, 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 I'm just, there still needs to go some, um, I need to put some in the library, which I haven't done yet, and also Marcus asked for some at the town meeting. And I said I'd take, I'd take some, so I have been, but they're closed, nine, four o'clock in the afternoon. So I'll take some to Marcus's cafe, if anybody else, there's a few in the office, if anybody else has any. And also Cross Flats Village Society are putting some in that, I don't know what you call it.
Notice board?
No, round the back of, that, well, we had meetings before.
Oh, they, they, the community centre?
Yeah.
The over fifty's.
Yeah, that's the fellow, yeah, yeah, yeah. It's, Tim, 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 I'm taking some there. Okay, yeah.
So I think, when, when we get to, so we've got.
But that's already been, been circulated anyway.
But we signed a, a good little bit.
That, I've, I've already, that's already gone, gone out.
I know, but good, yeah.
All right, yeah.
I don't think there's anything concerned that's sensitive at this point. So, there you go. The Bradford, Bradford, when we could come.
Sorry, there's one more promotional, promotional item that we ought to be seriously about. And that is the fact that we could get an election for this council. And we need to start promoting the fact that we need people to be more aware. Perhaps we should have a newsletter in general prior to the next big meeting, the next council nomination in good time. Try and get your work ended.
It's closed, the county won't come today, the, the elections have closed. The county nomination. Right, we'll have to wait until we've got a new council and then we'll, then we can, then we can decide.
It was a few weeks ago then.
Yes.
Um, do you want to go?
Yeah. We're in the Cross Flats litter pick, thanks to Cross Flats residents. Maybe get the next one publicised. Come on, guys, let's, let's try and be Cross Flats, if we can engender a bit of phone coming out there.
But frankly, competition.
Well, you never know. Also, obviously, that we've been elected on block, on the post and there will be vacancies, news to follow about that.
And then Green and Clean Forum, I think.
Yeah.
She's already sent that along.
I know.
Sent that along.
We don't have, we can't have too much communication, John. That's, that's a very.
No, and, and, and on that, what Steve said at the town meeting about people not knowing. If people don't read the, the stuff he sent out to them and don't take any notes, for example, the newsletter, the annual report, et cetera, et cetera. If it just been it, well, they won't know anything about it, will they? I think we're, we're working a lot harder to, to communicate with the public, but, um, as I say, if people don't, don't, aren't interested or, I mean, it's just perfect example tonight is we're doing some Jeffing here. It's probably not a Gilstead village society because they're talking about lining it up and that's disastrous. But we're in the same situation at Cotterley. I prefer that's, that's the problem these days.
And although I don't disagree with that, there's also, if people aren't interested in something, that might be because they don't find the thing interesting. Which is why I was making the point about the initiative of electrifying the bandstand being really good because it's interesting and it benefits everybody. And so I think that it goes hand in hand. The council get more involved in broader things that are interesting, benefit broader community. And then that, that's going to engage them. But we, I'm, I'm not saying that we should take all the responsibility of people not being interested in us. I'm just saying that we should accept some, hang on, you should accept, accept some of being interesting and being out there. I don't know, maybe some of you will hate this idea, but do a little video and say, I'm councillor X, I do this, I'm interested in that. That's the sort of thing that younger people are interested in, younger people that I know, not being discriminated. And so that's the sort of thing that's going to stand out, that's the sort of thing that's going to be different. Look at other town councils, other parish councils, how are they interesting? How do they get a lot of buying through council down south? They've got loads of buying. Why? Because they're properly integrated within the community. They're integrated in a way that we aren't, I'm not sure whether we can be or not, but I don't think we've tried in that way. And so as I know that is true, I think there'd more be done on our side of things as well. On your side of things as well.
Is that all promotional writing, sorry?
I think it's all promotional writing, so.
Right, well, I like to, I would like to thank our Chair for such a tech, tech nova, for doing an absolutely excellent job. And I think she's getting council together, she's, the, the amount of work that she's put in, it's been unbelievable. I would like that minute in her, if everybody's in agreement for that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I'm against that. Thank you. We'll, we'll move on then to twenty-two, twenty-three, two-seven, one, the date for the next meeting. So it's Tuesday, the sixteenth of May, six-thirty, it's going to be here.
Mayor. So did he say he's going to be here?
Yeah. Here, yeah.
I'm sorry, that was my mistake. I just sounded like you're made of noise.
I thought, I thought that was a mayor.
At least I'm still sunny as a cat.
You have to look out for that.
Right, then, move, move really swiftly on then. Twenty-two, twenty-three, two-seven, two, explosion.